Windsor Heights Regular Business Meeting, City Council, Come to Order. Roll call. Bell, Henry?
Here.
Joseph Jones?
Here.
Barnes?
Here.
Mike Jones?
Here.
Kamala Freido?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Motion to approve the agenda? Come on. Roll call. Bell, Henry?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Barnes?
Here, yes.
You sure?
It's Monday, I know. Whatever, we answer yes.
Tonight's special occasion, we've got some special recognitions. Zach? Come down here, please. Thank you for your four years of service. DART, Economic Development, let's see, MPO, not MPO, Metro Advisory, Public Safety, all of the things that you've done, working on the flag which you will continue to do. In honor of those four years and your continued assistance and support of the community, a certificate of appreciation is presented to you. Thank you for your service. Ken?
Darren. Darren Scuries joined the Windsor Heights Fire Department on November 29, 2005. In 2006, Darren was awarded the Rookie of the Year Award, and he received the Firefighter of the Year Award in 2008, 2010, 2011, and again in 2018. After more than 14 years of helping ensure the safety of Windsor Heights, Darren will retire on January 3, 2020. Darren has been a great asset to Windsor Heights Fire Department, to the Windsor Heights Firefighters Association, and the community. Darren's been instrumental in helping train new members and helping our fire department continue to excel and grow. Most of Darren's 14 years were spent as a paid-on-call member, where Darren spent countless nights, weekends, and weekends on-call in case of emergency. The paid-for-call members leave their family in the middle of night, thank you, Sue, on weekends, holidays, you're welcome for that one, and miss out on special occasions as part of their commitment to the fire department. We're sad to see Darren retire, but we also hope he will be able to enjoy more time with his family and get a little more sleep. Please join us in thanking Darren for his 14-plus years of dedication to the Windsor Heights Fire Department, and there's a come-and-go reception in the fire department after this recognition, so thank you.
David? But thank you very much for the foundation support of Veterans Day, and we look forward to continuing to work this support arrangement out with you and with the city. Thank you again. Now, we have a secondary highlight swearing-in of council members. Susan, Teresa. Well, I do.
Teresa Harms.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Iowa.
And the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member at large.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council member at large.
City of Windsor Heights as now or hereafter required by law.
City of Windsor Heights as now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you. Martin's Company, he's referenced the 2019 Audit Report. Marvin?
I want to thank Mark, Travis, for all their help, cooperation, and effort done. This is the audit for the city for the year ended June 30, 2019. And this year, on page 4 through 6, is our opinion. That opinion, you'll find at the top of page 5, it reads a little different than the one did last year. Basis for qualified opinion on governmental activities and the aggregate remaining fund information. The financial statements do not include financial data for the two of the city's legally separate component units, the City Windsor Heights Volunteer Fire Department Association and the Windsor Heights Foundation. Amounts by which this omission would affect the receipts, disbursements, and cash balances of governmental activities and aggregate remaining fund information has not been determined, so we don't know how much is involved there, so we have to qualify the opinion that we don't know, because legally they should be on the report. In our opinion, except for the facts of the matter discussed in the basis for qualified opinion on governmental activities and aggregate remaining fund information paragraph, the financial statements referred to above present far out of the financial position of the governmental activities and aggregate remaining fund information of the City Windsor Heights as of June 30, 2019, and the changes in its cash basis financial position thereof for the year then ended in accordance with the basis of accounting described in Note 1. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present far out in all material respects the respective cash basis financial position of the business type activities and each major fund of the City of Windsor Heights as of June 30, 2019, and the respective changes in cash basis financial position for the year that ended in accordance with the basis of accounting described in Note 1. So, basically saying, we left out the component units at your request, but we have to amend our opinion statement that way, otherwise you've got a clean opinion otherwise, so it's still a good report. Page 7 through 12, there's a section called Managed Discussion and Analysis, and in truth, this section is supposed to be written by the city, and for most cities it doesn't because they don't have sufficient help with adequate knowledge to draft a report like this, so as auditors, we've been putting that in, and with the approval of the city after they review the report. And there's a lot of information in there, and I would recommend that all council members read through that section very carefully, it helps you to understand the financial statements that follow. The first financial statement you'll find on page 14, Exhibit 8, and that shows all of the information for the city in one financial statement. It shows the change in the cash basis financial position from 9.6 million to the current 10.4 million. Of this 10.4 million, of this 10.4 million, 4.8 is unrestricted, so you do have a healthy balance.
You're on page 14.
14 and 15, just on 15. It's showing the total, all the funds, and if you look down at the bottom of the page, you see the breakdown of the fund balances, we've got over 4 million unrestricted, so we've got a little wiggle room in there yet. Page 19, after the report, starts a section called Notes to your Financial Statements. These are supporting information and schedules supporting all the financial statements, gives you more information, and puts in those figures that you looked at on the financial statements. It's very informative. Both are part of your financial statements, you should read those very carefully. I try and include everything in there that's to the financial statements, and if there's something that I do not put in there sometimes, you'd like to see them there, let me know. We've got a lot of notes for you to digest there. Page 36 is the Budgetary Comparison Schedule, and I'm always glad to see that in the Dysfunctional Section, which I have to look at, every single one of those are within the budget, so it means you've been trying to do a job of keeping your costs in line by category, so that's good for, good thing to see. Page 48, you see a schedule of capital projects. And on there, I list each of the projects separately. I noticed in a lot of cities, and I think some of your earlier reports, you had them all lumped together. I like to see a schedule where you can look at each one separately, and know what's going on in all the different projects that go in in the city. Some cities have a lot more projects than others, but you have quite a few open here, so go rate in progress there. Page 50 is the schedule of debt. This is all your general obligation bonds and notes, date, original amount of them, and what's happened during the year on each bond, so you know what your total liability is out there. I checked every item on this page with the holder of the bonds every year, so they're all verified, I know that the names are right, the issue's right, interest rates are right, and balances are right, so it's a good schedule for you to have in your information. Then, page 60, from the start, the findings. Fiscal findings. We've got nine findings in there this year, that's more than we had last year, but that's understandable with the lack of people we had in the office when I came here to do the audit. One person can't do everything, so it's not unusual to find some missed postings that way, but that's why I had to spend more and more time this year looking at everything and getting everything in balance. I think you're on the road coming back now, you're looking for a new city administrator, you're thought in a new financial persons, I understand it, and as staff starts growing, there should be fewer and fewer of these problems. Hopefully next year I won't have nine findings, I'd rather see one, two, maybe three, the most, that's more ideal, so I don't think that, if any audits I do, that I don't find something somewhere. Internal controls always on all the orders, using my figure six, but other than that, things happen, and it's my job to find them out. This list of findings, I look at as a, what do I want to call it, staff work assignment. This is a staff's work assignment for this coming year, to get all these findings cleaned up, screened out, so I won't have that many findings next year, and staff works through these things. Some of the findings, you know, I've got on here are the same as ones I had last year. Well, that's understandable this year, but I hope we don't find that next year again. That work assignment is very important, and I think that should be worked through, and most will be cleaned up by next year. I think that's about all I have.
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you for the report.
Thanks, Marvin. Motion to approve?
As I go through this, I mean, you've got to remember, this is, this report ends June 30, so we were fully staffed during that time, correct? Yeah, so I recognize we had a full staff when this fiscal year was happening, and I certainly want to commend Mark for recognizing the need to make some organizational changes. I mean, this kind of shows the need right here, too, and so I guess my other comments are not going to be anything I'm going to ask you to respond to, Mr. Berger, but if I look at these, segregation of duties, we had that last year.
You have that every year.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I know, I know, that's what I'm saying, and then I go to my second thing I have to address, financial reporting. Due to lack of staff, we've all had serious deficiencies. Well, we had a full staff, but I think we've seen that one before, too.
I wasn't sure when all the staff left, I just know that it wasn't the staff.
I'm kind of addressing both of us on the dais and the public here. Cancellation and approval of payment invoices, not approved of payment, and no disbursements were canceled with a paid stamp. I'm almost embarrassed about some of these things, I don't know about the rest of you, but the fourth one, the payroll tax deposits, timely federal tax deposits were not made, and significant amount of tax deposits were overpaid when the tax was paid, and the city could be subject to penalties. The next one is about the budget, when the budget was amended, the transfers in were increased without incoming transfers out. I think these are kind of common sense things, really, but the pository resolution, the pository resolution was not updated. Three months were examined during the audit, with all three months balances excess of the resolution on file.
Yeah, the resolution is several years old, most cities do a new resolution every January, when they approve the newspaper, all the first of the year.
Yeah, I think we need to do some work with this, and of course, I'm sure we will, and then the sixth one is, the city should investigate alternatives to eliminate these deficits, deficits in order to return these funds to a sound position, well, that's pretty obvious. The council approved the resolution to transfer a significant amount of ATD funds to fund for street repair, the funds were transferred into a special revenue fund established for the purchase of capital equipment. I think we were real clear about where it should have gone, anyway. Unclaimed property, Quota Vile, requires each city to report and remit obligations including checks outstanding for more than two years to the state treasurers. The city did not remit these obligations as required. Well, I guess what I'm asking, I'm not looking at, certainly not looking at blame here, I'm really not, because this is passed, but I'm trying to look forward a little bit, and I would ask Mark that with our finance director, yourself, and others, Travis, that we get an update that these things were dealt with, and there's resolution. I like to, when something's resolved, I'd like to report back to this council that that happened and how it happened, please.
Yes, we'll do that, right now we're focused on the budget, but I expect within two or three months, these things will be.
Okay, yeah, I'm not giving you a timetable on that, but I mean, again, I'm almost embarrassed about this thing.
I think in a couple of months, these are all fixable issues, that some of them may take action by the council, but I think there will be approval of the actions that are presented.
I just want to know that, and I think the other council members should appreciate that as well, as well as the people out there, I mean, our major responsibility is to take care of taxpayer dollars. I feel a little...
Mike, I really appreciate you going through the report like you did.
Well, please do your own.
I do a lot of work putting that report together, and all for purpose.
No, I agree thoroughly, the whole thing, yes.
I appreciate that, appreciate it.
I had a number of bullet points that I think, Mike, you covered most of them, but what I wrote notes for myself, some things like missed postings, checks being properly signed, invoices not being approved for payment, and those are, seem like easy things for competent people to handle, and I know there's been more or less a changing of the guard with different staff coming in, so maybe some of those problems have been quote-unquote "resolved," but same thing that Mike was saying, I would hope, and I would assume that this has already been done, talking to staff, finance director, Travis, about how are we going to fix these things and prevent them from happening again.
I worked under Mark Aronson out at Waukeah, I was on the city council out there, and I've been on both sides of it. And so I know those things are going to get answered.
He's not answering the question.
He's a smart man, smart man. Yeah, and our finance director didn't come on board until December 2nd, something like that.
Yeah, a couple weeks ago. So, I mean... It took a while to pick things up, didn't it?
Well, I think she's quick, I've heard really good things about our pointy there, so expecting big things.
I won't disappoint.
I don't think you will.
I can assure you that in a couple of months, these will all be answered, you can hold me to that.
Okay, well, just keep us informed. Thank you, Mr. Berger.
Thank you.
Seeing you again.
Thanks, Marvin. Motion to approve?
Second.
Mayor.
Roll call.
Mayor.
Question in the back.
Darren Scuries, I'm representing the Windsor Heights Firefighters Association. I spoke to you the last time that the audit came through, I was the vice president at that point, I'm just a member now. Once again, we disagree with the way that the association is classified in that audit, and using the GASB 61 flow chart for these type of component units. Is the proposed component unit legally separate? Yes, we are. Does the proposed government appoint a voting majority of the proposed component units board? Absolutely, they do not. That takes us, does the proposed component unit meet the financial dependency and financial benefit burden criteria, which would be that the city has in some way a burden for our debt obligations, or provides us money to do anything? They do not. Takes us to, would it be misleading to exclude the proposed component unit? We do not think so. We think it's more confusing for citizens to be listed in the audit, because they can get the idea that the money is the city's, the money can control that, the city can control that money, the city can spend that money, they cannot, and again, we disagree once again with the way the Firefighters Association is listed, and again, the Police Department Association is nowhere to be found in the audit. What is the difference between the two? The mission statement is not right, again, the fire association is listed three different ways, again, so once again, we just, we disagree with being included as a component unit in the audit. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Well, isn't that why we left it out? About that was sort of elucidating to the problem here.
Yes, it's not, the financial transaction of the fire association had not been evaluated in this report, but Mr. Scuries is right, they're still mentioned in the report as a component unit, but their transactions were not evaluated.
And so the foundation mentioned...
Yes, that's correct, right. Neither, in this past fiscal year, the transactions of either of those organizations were evaluated, so yes, they're mentioned, but no, they're not a part of, I'll say it my way, they're not a part of the audit, even though they're listed.
Roll call to approve? Bell, Henry?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Come up to the podium, state your name, address, and speak for at least up to five minutes. Okay, next item is consent agenda. Motion to approve?
Second.
Bell, Henry?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of third and final reading of ordinance 1910, in order to amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Windsor Heights by amending Chapter 1805 Publications. This reading is the final reading to state that we will put the agenda and other documents required at Public Safety Building, City Hall, IVs bulletin board, and also post it to the webpage. Roll call. Bell, Henry?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of second reading of ordinance 1911, amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Windsor Heights by amending Chapter 60-07-05 Truck Rounds. Motion to approve, second reading.
Can we add that we skip the third reading and just approve both at the same time?
Well, the problem is, if that fails, then it all fails. What you should do is go ahead and approve the second reading, and then you can make a motion to waive and publish. to waive and publish.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Bill Turner? Harms.
Yes.
Yes.
Justin Jones?
I didn't even start that for sure.
Yes.
But you started before we were ready.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mike Jones?
Consideration of resolution 19-1206, approving the contract with Public Consulting Group
Yes.
Harms.
Okay, the motion is to approve the third...
Waive the third reading.
Waive and publish the, publish the completion of the...
for cost reporting associated with grounds for medical transportation reimbursement Our second motion. Roll call.
Bill Turner?
programs.
Yeah, as you may recall, the last meeting we approved the inter, or you approved the
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
intergovernmental transfer agreement, and at that point, I told you I was going to try
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms.
Yes.
to work through those cost reports.
New business, consideration of resolution 191205, approving the final acceptance and
I did that. And then I started hearing from some other fire chiefs in the area that they did that
certificate of completion for Sunset Terrace reconstruction in the amount of $26,738.58.
as well. And then after speaking with other departments in other states that are going through the GEMT program, they learned that it was significantly beneficial to them to use the consulting
Justin, this is the acceptance of the project and being done with this one on Sunset Terrace,
group. One department in particular, and of course, the scale is much larger than us, but one
so.
Were there, did they get penalized some dollars?
department in particular did the cost reporting themselves first year, had PCG do it the
Yeah, it was, it shows on, I think maybe not, on this pay request, it shows the $50,000,
second year, and they left $750,000 on the table the first year, and they cannot recover it. So, in doing that, I decided it was probably wise to have a conversation with PCG, and
like a fourth line down in total amount of, or other payments or deductions.
we had a conference call last Friday, maybe, and I walked them through my estimates, and
So that was their, like, damages of $50,000. Yep.
they walked me through their estimates, and there's a significant difference.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve it?
Is there?
Potentially twice.
So moved.
And this company, PCG, does these cost reports for numerous states, numerous agencies in
Second.
Roll call.
Bill Turner?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
those states doing the GEMT program, and they have an agreement with INSO, which is
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Iowa Emergency Resources Association that we belong to, that reduces our rate from 18% to 9%, and that's 9% of the actual revenues we receive in the GEMT program. So there's no net cost to the city because it's taking that 9% out of whatever we get back, but I think that it's definitely probably in our best interest to let professionals do these cost reports and see where we're at, rather than potentially coming in half of the amount of revenue we're going to recover in this program.
And they would, if there's an audit, they would take care of that, too?
Yeah, that's, there's three parts to this. One is the cost reporting, and the second part is if, if there's an audit and they assist us with that, well, that's one of the worries of the fire chiefs, is if we go down this road and we do it ourselves, and they come back and find a problem, do they come back and claim Medicaid brought on our part, which we don't want to really get into. The third part of this, that's not GEMT related, but it's related to this, this project, we were notified a month or so ago that we are lucky enough to be selected for a CMS Medicare audit next year as well. And it's my understanding that that's a rather challenging audit to get through. It uses some of the same information as GEMT, but not all of it, and this company will do that audit for us as well. And I don't believe that there's a significant cost. I've heard that there's no additional cost, but I don't confirm that with them. But I, I think that between the cost reporting for GEMT and making sure we're getting as much revenue as we can, the audit standpoint, and then definitely the CMS Medicare side of things, I think it makes sense for us to, to get on board with PCG. It's a short contract, it's through 2022, so they do the FY 18 and FY 19, we have to go back and get reimbursed for those this year, and so they will do both of those reports, and they'll do our FY 20 report and our FY 21 report. And, you know, in that three-year period, we decided we want to go a different route, we're not tied into a long-term contract, but I think it's definitely beneficial for the city to, to use that.
Questions, any comments? Motion to approve?
Someone. Second.
Roll call.
Bill Turner?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of total vehicle purchase in the amount of $50,524.62. Ken?
So on this one, you might remember when we talked about the ATE allocations, we originally had $55,000, we backed that down to 38 as a result of the $17,000 from the sale of the Tahoe and the Crown Beck. We got bids, and we got bids on Explorers, which we currently use, as well as the Durangos. The Durangos came in a little bit cheaper, $1,500, I think, than the Explorers. Another part of this is that the Durangos, the Explorers are currently under a recall, and there's a bunch of them sitting in a lot in Michigan, and it could take a lot longer to get those than the Durango. I had Stu Hanson bring a Durango down for Patrol to look at, sit in, kind of feel, they felt like there was more space in it, and I think they were all on board with trying that vehicle and see how it does. Dallas County uses them, the Kansas Fire Department also has a bunch of them, and Oskaloosa uses a couple of them. I've spoken with those people, those agencies, and they seem to have good luck at them, so that's the route we're requesting to go. This will be a marked unit, there places a marked unit on the street that's currently got over 91,500 miles on it, and that top vehicle on your first page, 7226, is the one that we rotated out, and they're giving us 5,300 for that on trade-in. So the net cost to the city for this vehicle after the $17,000 in revenues generated from the sale of the two vehicles and the trade-ins is $33,524.62.
We spoke to it earlier.
I'm sorry?
Didn't we speak to that earlier, that vehicle? Previous meeting?
In the, the ATE allocation, yeah, this is the actual purchase.
Motion to approve?
Uh huh. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Bill Turner?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms.
Yes.
Next item is resolution 19-1207, improving community center fee waiver for the Greater Des Moines Leadership Institute on January 23rd, 2020, in the amount of $725.
Do you just?
Yeah, do you want me to?
Yeah, I want Jess to do this.
Okay.
The Greater Des Moines Leadership is an organization where the, where people in the community get to go and learn how to become leaders for Greater Des Moines, so we're just requesting to use the Windsor Heights. Community Center, in addition, the C-SPAN bus will be parked out front for an hour before the class starts. Classes from 1 to 5, so the bus would be parked there from 12 to 1.
I was just going to say, I would suggest that we do approve the waiver. I'm excited about GEMI being in Windsor Heights, and it pulls people from across the metro to be a part of their leadership program. I think this will be a good benefit for our community as well, to have it here.
Any other comments or questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Bill Turner?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms.
Yes.
Next item is resolution 19-1207, approving community center waiver to extend hours to 1 a.m. for New Year's Eve event.
The people that are in the community center on New Year's Eve want to extend their hours of operation until 1 a.m. Currently, our guidelines close it down at 1, or at midnight, so they won't pay for an extra hour. They're not serving alcohol, so we're not really concerned about the place being trashed, which is why we close it down at midnight.
Aren't we all invited to attend?
You gotta go in there and check once in a while, though.
So that's where the elders to, they're paying for it, they just want to extend it by an hour.
Thanks, I'm New Year's Eve, you probably want to hear it. Lefredo?
Sorry.
Roll call.
Bill Turner?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms.
Yes.
We did all the legwork on that one, she's just running all the cameras, so I didn't.
Next item is consideration of resolution 19-1209, approving committee appointments for 2020. Any discussion, or I want to entertain a motion to approve.
I guess I didn't realize that these needed to be approved or had been approved by the council in the past.
I don't notice it has been, Therese, but I thought maybe we should do it.
I think it's a good idea.
Did you have conversations with everybody to see if they were, or you just went with status quo?
There are some changes. I moved a few people around, from reading it. Talked to a couple of people and...
Well, you didn't talk to me, I don't, I don't know.
Was there something you wanted?
No, I just, well, I would ask the question, why do we not have, actually, I see something different that I didn't see before, so when I saw my, my, the online version, but, no, nothing in particular, I'm just curious at how you went about your process to choose and if you had conversations with anybody, so.
And I did. Motion's on the table to approve.
You know, I just got to say, it was kind of funny, really. I mean, you had a question about talking to others, and we can see if, and who can talk to, the mayor talk to, but I don't know that we need that. I mean, I accept it as it is, because I think in the past, we didn't even consider, we didn't even talk about it, we just assigned.
Yeah, I mean, my first committee assignments, I was just told I was going to be on a committee. I didn't...
Yeah, right. So, and I think, I think a former mayor had a little say in that personally, maybe I'm wrong, but, anyway, so I mean, I don't have any objection to that.
I'm just, I'm just confused about the, if there's any sort of, like, legality to this, what these are.
I have the authority to approve and make committee assignments. However, I thought I would put it forward to the council and get your approval with it also.
Okay.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Bill Turner?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms.
No.
Mark? This will be your 21 budgets preparation status.
Okay, just a few other things prior to that. The survey field work for the pedestrian bridge being considered as part of the BIUC project was completed last week, I believe. Is that correct, Justin? Thank you for that. There are currently 13 resumes which have been received by the consultant of the city administrator search. They're due by January 12th, and it's not unusual for many of these to come in in the last week or so. Hy-Vee has purchased the QuickTrip, QuickTrip store on Hickman and is planning to make some changes to the exterior of the building and the gas pump area. We're trying to get a planning and zoning commission meeting in the first week or two of January to review the plans so that we don't have to have them wait for two months for a meeting. It's just they came in after the time for November, which was Thanksgiving week, and then this month, it's Christmas, and so we're, I'm just trying to not put them off for too long. And Chief, my, my calendar doesn't update when I get a new phone, which I had to get yesterday. Now, I think, is this the last time you'll be with us for several months?
For several weeks.
For several weeks.
How many weeks?
Seven weeks.
Or several months. I'll be...
Couple.
So, I just want the council members to be aware, and I think you already approved the chief's participation in the FBI.
I'm a little nervous about letting you go.
Well, I...
I will be connected, I promise.
So, we'll, we'll miss you, but don't be thinking of me. Regarding the budget report, the Polk County Assessor Preliminary Taxable Valuation Report was received today. That should allow us to have a good set of numbers to review for the Budget Committee meeting on Wednesday morning. The preliminary numbers show a taxable valuation increase of 5.23% compared to last year, which is a nice increase. I'm planning to send a preliminary budget and tax rate to the council members by the end of the week. I'm still of the opinion that a tax rate decrease of $1,000 is a reasonable expectation. So, there'll be more to say about Anna this week. Thank you.
Stick with it.
Oh, yeah?
Travis?
I wrote Civic Clerk in there, took out selected pages of new agenda management and software platform that we'll be having. We tried this tonight, but this will allow us to actually have each item come up, and then it'll offer electronic voting. That'll be some slow rollout stuff on the backend. You're not going to see a lot of difference, but it will reshuffle the agenda if we miss something, it'll push it out the drop box, and the social media pages, emails, it's a lot easier to do agendas with agenda manager software. So, we're looking to have that onboard probably by first or second weekend, or first or second meeting in February. We had our employee appreciation and benefits fair that was organized by Dalton, and thank him for that. That was a great opportunity to get everybody together. We have started the transition to Cable Business Services, who is a local HRA benefit administrator. So we did a three-month payout on the other company, meaning people have three months to get their planes in, but starting to work, so everyone will start going over to Cable. Our relationship is, is much better in dealing with benefits, so those are the two things that I've been working on besides everything else, so.
Jen?
We did not exclude you guys on the TV, we, or having some problems, but we'll get that fixed before too long so that you have it on both walls. But the public safety report for the month of November is in your packet. Special thanks to the Firefighters Association for the Santa Day on Saturday, and we had lots of good comments from that. And then also, a huge thank you to Hy-Vee for helping out with our food drive yesterday and collections for Garrett Foreman's family. Hy-Vee actually came up with an incredible idea that we hadn't thought of, make a, I think it was a $5 bag, a $10 bag, instead of people having to go and get stuff, they could just pay $5 and it was already bagged for them. They took the receipt to the officers that were working it, and then they just grabbed a bag and threw it in, and so we'll try to rule with that next year, but as you all know, they're great community partners and we appreciate their help with that.
Paul?
Written report, I don't know if you have any questions. It's in the packet there.
Woody?
My first report's in the packet, so hopefully I did it right, also includes this camera equipment, which I'm going to be doing video projects and start having these recordings of our meetings available the next day on the website, Facebook, and Twitter, because the internet has cut out on me twice on our Facebook Live video, so.
Thank you. Jack, you got anything from Mike Dart?
Yeah, we just had our, so the cool thing about Dart is, you're going to have to... We spent the last two years getting to this point.
People have three months to get their planes in, but starting to work, everyone will start going over to cable. Already the relationship is, is much better dealing with benefit. So those are the two things that I've been working on inside of everything else, so.
Jen?
Uh, we did not exclude you guys on the TV. We are having some problems, but we'll get that fixed before too long so that you have it on both walls. But the public safety report for the month of November is in your packet. Special thanks to the Firefighters Association for the Santa Day on Saturday. We had lots of good comments from that. And then also a huge thank you to Hy-Vee for helping out with our food drive yesterday and collections for Garrett Foreman and family. Hy-Vee actually came up with an incredible idea that we hadn't thought of, make a, I think it was a five dollar bag, a ten dollar bag. Instead of people having to go in and get stuff, they could just pay five bucks and have a army bag for them. They took the receipt to the officers that were working it and then they just grab a bag and throw it in. So we'll try to roll with that next year. But as you all know, they're great community partners and we appreciate their help with that.
Written report. I don't know if you have any questions. It's in the packet there.
Whitney?
My first report's in the packet, so hopefully I did it right. Also includes this camera equipment, which I'm going to be doing video projects and start having these recordings of our meetings available the next day on the website, Facebook and Twitter. Because the internet has cut out on me twice on our Facebook Live video, so.
Thank you. Jack, you got anything from the dark?
Yeah, we just had our, so the cool thing about dark is. We spent the last two years getting to this point where we're finally talking about the, the funding formula and how we want to handle that. So we just had our first workshop in a series of, I believe it's three. So the next two are going to be the, actually the most important ones. So, you know, I would just leave you with this.
That's nice, huh?
There, there is a lot that is going to go into these coming months with dark, but.
Thanks for sharing.
But it's, it's incredibly important. You know, the two years on there, that gone there, then having a, you know, taking a raise from Steve for that is just so imperative that we continue to fund dark into the future. And there is, you know, I'm not going to lie to you, there are cities that are trying really, really hard to not be a part of dark. And, you know, it's, it's going to take people being very vocal about the fact that we actually, you know, we really do need it, especially for those who require it and need it every single day. And, you know, we're one of the heaviest users of dark. So hopefully as a council, you can afford you keep supporting it because there's going to be a lot of tough decisions in the future. Hopefully they aren't that tough, but other than that, thank you for serving with me. It was a pleasure. Hopefully, you know, you continue to push forward as a city. I really look forward to watching it and I'll probably come here and, you know, you guys will want some of that.
Could you put out a quick email on the breaking out Windsor Heights as from the original CBRE reports?
Yep. Uh, the report I sent along, those are some nice things as a realtor we get. We get demographic reports, so it breaks down to, all the way down to what people like to do, what they're interested in, how many kids they have. I mean, it's, it's a pretty robust report, so I would encourage you to read that. It's always nice to know what your demographic is. Obviously, we're all council members and we've talked to a lot of people in the community. But to actually have it on piece of paper and be able to say, you know, this is the way that our community is growing and, you know, these are potentially some of the ideals that are going to be important in the future.
Is that on the website?
I emailed it out this morning.
Oh, did you?
Yep, yep. So if you ever want to see stuff like that in the future, I know we have a new round of census coming around, so that's going to change some of those demographics on there. But if you ever want to see some of that information for just like quick, quick looks, I can always provide that for you.
We'll take, take you upon it. Joseph?
We had a Bravo meeting right after our last council meeting, so you published all the grants, awards of the communities, about four million dollars in grants to different communities around the metro. And this was the fiftieth anniversary of Bravo this year, so it was a fiftieth anniversary event a little while ago. And of course, you know that the Bravo Gala is February first, so not very long from now. So we're, we're going to figure out a way to participate in that, like we've done in the past. We had a meeting to discuss a little bit of economic development. It was a quick meeting. Zach was unable to attend, but gave some input, but we have developed, but I hope it will be a good plan proposal to bring to you all in a couple of weeks after Matt spoke, well, probably not Matt, it's John spoke. Take a look at them and write up some things for us to approve. But essentially, what Mike Jones and I discussed was having a tiered system that will allow for abatement of five years for official, for approvals made to official. So, so we can bring it back to everyone. We also had a follow-up or a new conversation, I guess, communications and all of Mike Jones and his two. We got to meet with Whitney and she presented her communications guidelines and I think it's, it's really good. There's a lot of work that she put into being proactive in terms of developing the plan and how she wants to make sure that we are touching folks in different mediums throughout our community and metro. We've heard about the cameras already, so I think that we'll see a revamped, re-engaged Windsor Heights communication with our citizens. So I'm pretty excited about that. That's all I have.
Kyle? By the way, congratulations on your influential forty, under forty.
Thanks. Very well deserved, very humble.
I do.
But you know.
Mike?
Yes. Followed with the Metro Waste Authority information we got from Mike McCoy, I contacted the two principals of Coles and Clive. Todd Johnson does have a committee that does environmental things and he's going to get that contact to the person that does that. And he's interested in that example. I did not get a response back from Principal Clyde as of yet, but hopefully there will be one. Winter Wonderland was really good again. You delegated it well and it was always a lot of fun. I, I loved doing it. Mike Jones was there as well and always have a lot of fun with that. And then finally, I just want to wish you all happy holidays out in the audience, as well as up there on the dais. Have a good, healthy new year. Come back refreshed and just go after it hard in the next year.
Mike?
Dalton, I was hoping you could tell me or tell us about the partial sewer service replacements and the upstream detention project.
Sure. Right now?
Yeah.
So for the partial sewer service replacement, I've been working pretty hard on this one. So a lot of the stuff we do is underground, so you got no idea what happens. But as you might know, the Windsor Heights City Council, the city of Windsor Heights isn't owning any of our sewers. So any sewer utility revenues that are collected goes to the Ruben Dell Windsor Heights Sanitary District. And then we act as operating contractors on it, kind of like Des Moines is with WRA. Anyway, so we surveyed a bunch of sewers in town, televised and cleaned them as part of our sliplining project last summer. While we were doing that, we televised up the services to the property line and found twenty-two that need to be replaced. It's hard to justify spending public dollars going back on private property where there's no direct benefit to the city. But we were able to justify it, I think, relatively so, replacing services at no cost to the homeowner from the main to the property line. And the idea behind that is that when we replace those to the property line, we're not going to have a failed service in three years, have to come in and cut open a brand new road. And so the Windsor Heights Sanitary, Ruben Dell Windsor Heights Sanitary Sewer District approved that. I think our total ask of them was somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars when that was approved, so it's pretty substantial. The upstream detention, Walnut Creek watershed management authority has been working pretty diligently over the last like six months on trying to figure out where we can put detention basins upstream to minimize flooding, primarily at Seventy-third University. Everybody's got their focus area, but in Windsor Heights, ours is Seventy-third University and then Down Park, because really if those flood, everybody else is flooded. We've identified six locations. Tomorrow afternoon, I'm actually heading out to one of them, meeting with some guys from Polk County Public Works and we're going to see what kind of opportunities there are to public, private partnerships to get some stuff from them, so. There's nothing we can do in Windsor Heights to keep Walnut Creek from flooded down there. So we, we got to go up and walk the watershed. When it comes time to spend any money, I will, I'll come and ask it.
So those two sewers, what is, what have they done?
Sorry?
Where, where did you do those?
Uh, they'll be getting done next summer on sixty-nine College and Allison.
Are they in your, what?
Uh, I didn't put the whole, I've got probably.
Yeah, I'd be kind of curious sometime if you can send us a new address.
Yep, sure, definitely. They're spread out over those three streets and there's more from five to ten on each street. So the biggest culprit that we found for replacement was Orange Bird. Some of them were busted clay tile or some of them were cast iron, but mostly it was orange bird or something.
Most proactive.
Right, yeah.
Sewer district has been very supportive.
Yeah, they're great partners.
That's a very interesting question.
It does, thank you. I was concerned, I was wondering how much money had been saved. You told, thank you.
Yeah, yep.
Anything else, Mike?
I think Joseph sort of spoke to what we were talking about as far as the commercial tax abatement program or plan. I think Whitney, our communications meeting, she pretty much laid it out more in-depth than I planned on doing it. So I don't really have many, any other comments?
Reese?
I would also like to thank everybody for their help with Windsor Wonderland, even though I wasn't able to be there for it. I appreciate everybody pulling, pulling through and making it happen. I heard it was a great success, so thank you and thanks Susan for her work on that too. Metro Wasted is on Wednesday, and so I will, I will be attending that. Mark, thanks for including the amounts of the budgetary.
You see them all, right?
On the agenda. I know that's important for our residents. I also have a question, and I know that we just redid our ramp down at Colby Park post-election and post our forum down there when we had lots of folks entering the building. This is some, an issue that consistently I heard from folks with disabilities or that had, or are just mobile, have mobile, difficult time with mobility, talked about how difficult it was to walk up that ramp. And so we don't know it because we don't have those impairments, but the, I had more than five people ask me about why we don't have a handrail. And so I know we've talked about it in the past, but I think it's something that we need to have serious consideration and discussion about and figure out what the cost associated to put in a rail. This was, again, I, I was really just surprised because it was something that came up and it also came up at the Veterans. That, and we had a lot of folks who were using pains or walkers or whatever to get up there, at least one wheelchair. And it was, it was a difficulty for many of them. And that was probably the number one thing that I heard from folks is how difficult it was to get into the building. Solian?
Motion to adjourn to Monday, January sixth, for regular council meeting in the council chamber?
So.
Sorry?
Roll call.
Who's? Phil Henry?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Caprada?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Tim Hardes?
Yes.
You have a happy holiday and a very nice new year and be careful.
And to the council, we have an exempt session to talk about labor stuff, so please don't go anywhere.